Welcome home. We are W N S T, AM 1570, Tassie Baltimore. We are Baltimore Positive. I am positively here in Ocean City, Maryland. It's all brought to you by our friends at the Maryland Lottery. I have the Pressure Lux. Trying to keep the whammy out of here in Ocean City, as well as the Lucky Sevens Doublers. It is our 27th anniversary. We are celebrating by eating my 27 favorite foods. I've been doing that all over the state. The hashtag is tastiness. And it's all brought to you by our friends at Curio Wellness, as well as G B M C, our newest sponsor. You know, I love coming down to Mako, here in O City. It's a political paradise, but it's also like businesses, local people, and local politicians, and people I haven't had on the show from the city council. I've been doing Baltimore Positive about seven and a half, eight years now. And some of the districts have changed over where we have different council people. People I've had on, people I haven't had on, former county executives. I just ran into Barry Glassman. So I like the sitting people. Mark Conway came by earlier and said hello. He's in the 4th District of Baltimore City. I said, which one is that? Is that the north one? Is it the... You're a bobo dad, but sort of next... So how are you? Thanks for coming by.
I'm doing well. Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Well, it's a great opportunity to get to know me. Yeah.
Tell me about yourself, Mark Conway.
Oh, well, what do you want to know? I'm originally from New York City. I moved here for college and fell in love with Baltimore, then fell in love with my wife and started to raise a family here. I've got two kids.
I like Baltimore more than New York, so if that matters.
Me too.
So far.
Me too. So, you know, moved here and made it my home. And I decided I wanted to be a part of the change. I wanted to be a part of making Baltimore a better place, you know, in 30 years.
Did you go to school for this stuff? What did you go to school for?
I went to Maryland, studied government politics and philosophy.
So you went to College Park?
I went to College Park, yeah.
Okay, but went up in Baltimore somehow.
So let's see, went to College Park, graduated. I worked in DC at the EPA for a little bit. And I went to grad school at College Park at the Policy School. And then when I graduated Policy School, I moved up to Baltimore to work in the mayor's office.
So being in government was your... Like, sports radio was my dream, being in government.
Yeah, public service was always in the cards for me. Yeah.
You always knew you were going to run for something?
Um, I figured that out probably at some point in college. And in part, it's because I realized that everything you do in some way, shape, or form is regulated by the government.
And I don't want to talk about politics. That you don't want to talk about the quality of your life.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, right? Yeah. And that's stick to sports, people saying to me. That gets a middle finger from me every time, because there is no such thing as... And I guess that's part of the American condition where people don't vote, right? I mean, the reason this clown's running the country right now is because we... People aren't engaged enough to vote, and the people that are voting for him are engaged in nonsense and fiction. I mean, I don't know what else to say. Like, I'm living in the real world. I'm blown away that this guy could get elected a second time, but it really speaks to why feet on the streets and people like you that said, "Yeah, I'm into politics. I'm into policy. I belong, whatever it is." But it's important when egg prices go up or gas prices go up or down or housing or all the things that...
Or energy prices go up or you name it. There's so many issues.
I had the mayor of Ocean City here talking about these turbines out here.
Yeah, they're out here with signs and all. So, you know, I think, you know, what I appreciated most about politics and policy and working in government is I'm here to solve problems. And people come to me every day with any kind of issue, potholes, street light out, or I can't afford my water bill, or I can't afford my energy bill. Yeah, and my job is to help them figure out how to resolve those issues. Sometimes we have government programs that already exist, and there's ways to immediately support them. And sometimes we don't. And that's where policy comes in. That's where writing laws and figuring out where we might intervene is my job.
Well, I often ask, like, a guy like you who went to school for this, get involved. You don't have to run for office. You can work for organizations, do all that. But the running part and the part where, like, your family... Because, look, I was going to run for mayor. I mean, that's why I did this.
Yeah.
Was my idea was like, we need better government. I saw the city on fire. I saw Sheila. I saw, you know, Stephanie. I just saw it all. I saw Healthy Holly. I mean, all of that.
I know.
What moved you from non-politician to politician? I mean, for me, we're seeing the fireball in the sky and Freddie Gray, and then Trump. I mean, I'm just like, I'm not a politician, but I'm an honest citizen.
That's an excellent question.
And that's all. I thought at some point, truth and good people are going to have to come back into service. And, I mean, I'm glad to meet more of them, but every one of you who serves in some way, I know I had to think that thing through and say, is this right for me even on a part-time basis? But I've been a public figure 35 years. I'm like, I'm not worried about any of that. I really want the city to be better, and that's why I'm honored to have people... I don't live in the city. I live in the county now, but these are hard, personal decisions to put yourself out there.
It is. It is. And it's a lot on my family. It's... I can't tell you how many nights I'd miss getting to tuck my girls in at night, and they're asking where I am. They're asking where I'm at right now. They're five and seven.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Daddy's at the beach. Yeah, right, sure.
I was just on the phone with them.
Or the convention hall.
So, you know, it's interesting. I'll tell you, like I said, I figured out I wanted to run at some point in college, but it didn't really hit me until I had kids. And I remember when we bought our house up in North Baltimore. I live in Guilford now. And I was going to a community meeting that happened to be at the then Guilford Elementary. And I remember I went to that community association meeting, and the first thing that they said when we walked in was, "Look, guys," it was the middle of the summer, "look, we apologize. It's so hot in here. We have to turn on this fan." This big, massive fan that was super loud, so people had to really speak up in order to be heard. And so they're like, "Look, we apologize that the fan is so loud. You have to speak loudly because we don't have AC in the building." And I thought, it's like, wow, you know, this is one of the nicest neighborhoods in the city, and we don't have AC in the building, in the public school? Second, they said, "Look, please, it's a little hot in here. Don't drink the water, because the water has lead in it." And that took me over the edge, you know, realizing that we had schools in such poor condition. And unfortunately, in a wealthier neighborhood, just showed me that there was this big disparity, that the kids that were going to that school weren't the kids that lived in the neighborhood. They were the kids that lived across York Road. It just... There were so many pieces to that that really spoke to me, and I felt like I needed to actually jump in and make a difference. And as a father, seeing what my children are afforded and what I would like all children to be afforded is in part what keeps me doing this work every day. But, you know, I think, you know, I want to solve problems. That's why I got into this work. Whether, you know, I chair the Public Safety Committee, whether it's public safety issues and crime and issues like that, or whether or not it's social issues and affordability and things like that. I try to step in where I can to support my constituents.
So 4th District, tell everybody that is unfamiliar, because any time I have a politician on, I'm like, all right, you're serving a district. I mean, they're just numbers to most people. And most people know who... Maybe they don't, who the representatives are that live in a district. But putting the face on the community and where you are, you say Guilford, oh, that's a nice area. And then you also say, well, you know, my wife would always say to me when we drove through Baltimore and I was entertaining the thought of being in politics, she would always... We'd always go to the worst neighborhoods. We'd drive around. She'd say, "You get to be mayor in this too." You know what I mean? You do. You know, and I saw the mayor a minute ago. Look, I love Baltimore, and I'm proud of all it stands for, but I... Every area has its own challenges. What's the 4th? What is the district? And what wakes you up and keeps you up at night in your district?
The broadest brush would be North Baltimore, Northeast Baltimore. For those that know neighborhoods in the area, you would think of York Road splitting my district in about half.
So Channel 2 in your district? South of there.
South of my district.
Swallow at the Hollow.
Swallow...
Senator.
Part of my district, yes.
All right. Heritage Barbecue. I'm just going down.
Yep, on York Road. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cannabis dispenser. You got the African restaurants there.
That's correct.
It's all your... Okay, that's your area.
Yep, that's all my district. And so I've got the Govins area. I've got... Really, York Road is...
Former Full Tilt, or, you know...
Former Full Tilt. I'd love that place.
Yeah, so did I, man.
Yeah, it's really sad to see them go, but, you know, what you see in my district is York Road is a historic red line within my district, and you see some of the wealthiest neighborhoods on the west side and neighborhoods that need much more support and help on the east side. And I find myself trying to bridge that gap. And York Road, to me, should be a zipper that can bring together two very different neighborhoods and a place that is inviting and supportive. But we go all the way east. We stop before we get to Morgan. I'm about a block away from Morgan, in Perrin Parkway. But, yeah, yeah.
Almost Coco's.
Almost, 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 almost.
See, I can invite you over there. That's not too far over.
Look, I'll never turn down a visit to Coco's.
Well, I mean, you know, I've had Odette in other districts next door or whatever, so, you know, I mean, you're here now. That's all that matters. Mark Conway's here. He's 4th District, Baltimore City. What is a councilman and what do you do all day? And I see these meetings in the mayor's office, the city council president, Zeke's going to be coming by, Brandon's coming by. On a daily basis, to be a councilman means what?
So my job is I'm a legislator at the local level. And so I write laws at the local level. I would say probably the most important work that we do is around the budget. We pass the budget for the city. We also pass a lot of bills around zoning and making sure that... Really governing how property can be used, you know, how property is owned across the city. We do oversight for all city agencies, so the police department, Department of Transportation, General Services. We make sure that they actually do their work and do their work well. And so that's more or less what we have proximity over.
Any thoughts on Trump talking about taking over our city?
It's just ridiculous. Trump is not a very smart man. I don't know.
Well, we know that. I mean...
I mean, I think Baltimore has had some of the greatest improvements in crime ever, full stop.
Because it was as bad as it had ever been.
It was as bad as it had ever been.
And now it's as good as it's been in a while.
It is the best it has been in a long, long time. And we still have a great deal of work to do. And I agree, we have a lot of crime that we still see throughout the city, a lot of issues that we continue to have to deal with. And we are absolutely working on that. And I will tell you, if you see the work that I'm doing, you know, I'm probably the most vocal about exactly those issues, but we don't need the National Guard to come. We don't. That's just silly. We don't need...
When you say you're vocal about things, what has improved it? I mean, make the case to the county to say, "City's safe. Come back." You know, don't...
Yeah, yeah. I'll tell you this, and I had this conversation earlier today. Someone asked me what I thought was contributing to the reduction in crime: stability, stability. I would suggest having a governor that is...
Kids are getting to school, getting home. Parents have jobs, pay the bills.
You said this early on, looking at, you know, politics and why you started to get interested in this work. I mean, we had a lot of instability within our mayor's office. We had five mayors for years or something like that. That has a real... It takes a real toll on our city agencies and on the city when you've got a mayor changing every couple of months. It was rough for us for a while. Having stability in the mayor's office is really, really, really important towards staying on the same path with one plan so that you can accomplish enough of that plan to see it actually come to fruition. I think, too, having a state's attorney that has been a real partner and has been really tough on crime, I think it bodes well because folks know that they will be prosecuted, that he's going to actually move forward on this work.
Ivan told me that when he sat down, because he's been so busy, I haven't had him on in a long time, but...
I think Ivan has been doing a phenomenal job. I think having a governor, having a governor that is about Baltimore, having GoCap actually work hand-in-hand with us has been really, really helpful.
Explain GoCap. You can't just throw things like that.
So the governor's office of crime prevention... I'm sorry. I'm guilty of that sometimes.
Media explainer of the people.
So the governor's office often coordinates a lot of efforts around crime and prevention of crime. And they often do so with the city. And for eight years under the Hogan administration, that just didn't happen. And so what folks forget is that we were at this low point where we are today in about 2014. We had 201 homicides that year. I remember I was working in City Stat. I was the police analyst at the time. But we didn't have much partnership after Hogan came in, and I think it really... We struggled as a city.
Well, the thing I always heard was, we have criminals leaving jails and coming back to their nests, basically, in Baltimore, who should not be out of jail.
And I will tell you, I will tell you, we need to fix that now. So I think a lot of the work that the state's attorneys has done to prosecute some of our most violent criminals, those folks will get out in five, 10 years or so. If we don't think about how we support those young men and young women that won't be so young anymore when they come out of prison, we're going to find those same problems in the future. So we need to be very thoughtful about the steps that we take today so that when they come out, our Returning Citizens program is truly effective. But these are the long-term policy things that people don't think about. It's very easy to throw people in jail. Well, maybe it's not easy, but to actually help repair those people and to put them on a successful track, that's a lot harder. So we're going to have to solve these problems perpetually. This work never stops. But I think, I think things are on the... Looking up for us as a city, and I'm really proud of the progress that we've made. I'm really proud of the partnership that has happened from the mayor's office to the state's attorney's office, to the governor's office, to the federal offices, FBI, ATF, so on and so forth. They've been really, really important in making sure that we can take down some of these more violent rings within the city. So I think, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done. We still have weaknesses in some of our juvenile systems that we need to shore up, and that's something I've been focused on.
Every time a carjacking happens or anything violent happens in the city, and it's a 15-year-old African-American kid or group, and it's caught on video. Look, I had the mayor of Ocean City here in the incident they had here six weeks ago. Shows up my timeline at 5 o'clock in the morning. The whole world knows about it. It's like, well, that happens every minute of every... No, it doesn't. The isolated incidents, whatever they are, they, in some ways, define it if you're watching Fox 45 or you're reading the Baltimore Sun now, whatever, what used to be the Sun. That lead story of problems, it needs to be fought with Baltimore Positive. Lead stories of, hey, good things are happening here. Let's talk about those things.
This is the important thing. I think it's okay to say that we've got issues, but we are making significant progress, and we're doing a lot of really good things. Baltimore is not the place it was a decade ago, two decades ago. We have made significant progress. It is significantly safer. We're having more interests. We're bringing more businesses. And we're building an identity beyond the crime issue. We still have issues with crime. We do. But you're not worried about your safety necessarily when you walk down the street. That's not the case anymore. And I think that doesn't mean that we stopped the work. We continue the work. We continue to support those neighborhoods. We continue to support the people that end up in that lifestyle and help them find a better path. But I think this is why I get into the work. It's not easy. We have to tout our wins. We have to tout our progress, and we have to be able to tell a new narrative about Baltimore. We also still have a great deal of work to do, and I think we're well on our way to continue to do that.
Great deal of work to do. What's next for you? You know, what are the three things that you're most concerned about as you sit here?
Yeah, so I'm really... So I chair the Public Safety Committee, so public safety is always at the top of my mind. I'm always thinking about how I can better improve the system, improve processes, so on and so forth, in partnership with all partners on the public safety front. Another major issue that I've been really leaning into, and I think everyone's feeling it, is affordability of energy prices. We're seeing a lot of pressure on energy bills, and I'm trying to figure out what we can do to make sure that energy is affordable. We're seeing, within the region, more AI, more data centers, and not quite enough generation. We're also seeing significant investments in our gas systems within the Baltimore region. And I want to make sure that we're thinking of ways so that those investments don't make our energy so expensive that everyday people can't afford to cool their homes or heat their homes or to, you know, keep their lights on. You know, the city council had a hearing a couple of months ago. I want to say this was in the dead of winter, when prices increased and kind of went through the roof. And we had a number of constituents across the city saying that they had to choose between their medication and paying their energy bills. We never want people in those situations. That should not happen. And so I'm trying to think of policy solutions that can help us resolve those issues. I'm trying to figure out what we can do to make sure that we have jobs and opportunities for young people. Careers, not just jobs, but careers for young people so that they see a future for themselves beyond just the, you know, bagging groceries in the grocery store. And that means training. We have plenty of opportunities with the city, in the police department, the fire department. Last weekend, I went out to the fire department's training grounds, and they had, oh, it's called Spark Camp, where they had a group of young ladies ages 14 to 16 that were learning how to be firefighters. So these young women were using fire hoses, climbing up ladders, using fire apparatus and otherwise just to kind of see what the job is like and see that, you know, stereotypically, we think of this as a young man's job or man's job. Women can do this work as well, and we want to attract them into the fire service. We want to give them an opportunity to show that this is definitely doable for them, and we need them in the fire service. So I'm trying to think of ways that we can build more pathways into careers and sustainable options in that way.
4th District Councilman Mark Conway joining us here for the first time on Baltimore Positive. We're in Ocean City. It's all brought to you by the Maryland Lottery. I have the Lucky Sevens Doublers. It is our 27th anniversary. We're Mako down here, talking policy and talking city. What makes you hopeful about the city? What is your... I mean, you made a life in the city, and you're trying to get things together. I mean, talking about crime, and it's not sexy, but the hopeful part for me, like, I lived at the harbor. One of the reasons I wanted to get in is about housing. I bought my condo for $439,000 in 2003.
Oh, it's probably worth a lot more now.
No.
No, it's not.
23rd floor at Harbor Court. I sold it for $385,000 19 years later. So tell me how that happens. My home, $430,000, I lost $50,000 being in my... And I spent $250,000 improving it back when I bought it.
Yeah.
That, to me, was indicative of the city needs real help above and beyond, you know, schools and the obvious Fox 45 leads. It's really about infrastructure investment. I've seen the Baltimore Peninsula show up over at Port Covington and things that were getting built and chips and all of that. And yet I'm at the harbor looking out the window, and when I talk to people about the harbor, people come up to me and they're sad about it. You know, when they talk to me about it, they're like, I went down there. There's nothing there. At some point, we need to get that going now.
We do. We do.
That's at the heart of my heart is that thing has been dragging, dragging, dragging. I saw it drag for five or six years before. I left three years ago. We're now a decade into, let's get a shovel in the ground. Let's get a plan. Let's go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we got to raise the money. I think that's the piece that we're at now. The council has done what it needs at this point to move forward. Now we need the money to actually execute. And I don't know the latest on where we are in that effort. Of course, the developer, NCB, is actually leading that effort, but that's what needs to happen next.
It just takes a long time to get things done. It does.
It does, with any of these things.
And I respect that, but then at some point...
You want to see it happen. I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I don't know if you're a big reader.
Because it's sitting there right now, today. If we go down there right now, we'd look at it and say, come on.
Nessa, have you read Abundance?
I have not.
Oh, so case in point of exactly the problem that you're having. So the book talks a lot about why it takes so long to build things in America, why we have a housing shortage and otherwise. And it's because of some of... Well, this is, I think, fundraising, but a lot of the sort of bureaucracy and issues that slow down development within, you know, within our country. It's not just Baltimore. This is across the entire country. So trying to think of ways that we can speed up these processes and make it easier for folks to do development across the city is going to be one of our best opportunities to see things like the Inner Harbor be rebuilt sooner, but even have more affordable housing across the city. And I think what you're seeing, you asked, you asked earlier, you know, what keeps you hopeful? I think having people, new council, I see Councilman Gray walking right past us, colleague on the city council, trying to solve problems. You know, we are coming in, we're asking hard questions, we're trying to solve problems. And I think that's how you get better, you know, being honest about where we do have faults and being resilient and, you know, not giving up on finding solutions to those problems. So, you know, we'll learn a lot about the Inner Harbor. We'll learn a lot about what it takes to get more affordable housing, just housing period, across the city. But as we can get more people in here, I think it helps with the affordability, you know, what you can make on your house in 19 years. That's really, really tough to hear. I'd be really frustrated if that happened to myself.
Well, we couldn't give it away. We couldn't get anybody to walk through a 23rd floor... I mean, my place was beautiful. I mean, my place is stunning. Uh, well, I put it on the market probably 18, 19. I got rid of it in '22.
Oh, it's the middle of the pandemic.
Oh, yeah. Well, the real problem with constituent to constituent, the real problem was that all of the apartments that came that were luxury had a lot of things that my condo fees and my taxes didn't. And also, we didn't have windows. We didn't have outdoor space in the building where balconies, pool, game room, fire pit, all of those things that 414 had next door, I didn't have.
Yeah.
So it sort of made condos a little outdated. It wasn't nearly as attractive to doctors, people who work in the city, people who want to be in the heart of the city. It was very problematic. It really was.
I'll tell you this, I had a really good conversation with State Housing about, you know, what we're doing around vacant buildings. And I asked them a question about, you know, we have all these plans about how we want to either tear down or repair vacant buildings across the city, and we're investing a ton of money to do so and trying to streamline those processes. But one of the questions I asked them was, what are we doing to make sure that we draw the jobs and industries for workers that can then live in those homes? Because even if we fixed up the buildings, but people don't buy them, we've not solved the problem.
Well, you have an empty city.
Exactly. You know, we've got these nice, beautiful buildings with tons of space, but nobody there. So we have to find a way to draw businesses here. And so we should be looking at ways to make Baltimore City as business-friendly as possible so that we're drawing new businesses and supporting new businesses to open up here in Baltimore. So I think there's a lot that we can do there that can help, but I think that's how we start to begin to solve the problem.
I moved to the county out of necessity three years ago, just sort of the way it worked out. And I could have lived anywhere. We did not want to leave the city. The thing I miss the most about the cities walking around and the variety of... I'm trying to stay skinny on a yoga mat. Thank you.
You look great, man.
But, but, living in the city where I live, there was something about any moment, day or night. It was like Manhattan-y, where it's like, all right, where are we going tonight? What are we going to go out and do with our feet? And walk through the harbor to East Baltimore, to Patterson Park, to Canton, to Fells Point, up to Mount Vernon, wherever we were going to go. We were not Uber people. We were not cabbie people. We were walking people. And I think that that, when I talk to Megan McCorkle or people that really try to promote living in the city... I love Megan. That the notion of living in the city is, it's a good life to live in the city. You know what I mean? Like, I lived there 20 years. I didn't leave because I didn't want to be in the city. But now that I've left the city, I'm like, and you guys are fixing it, dare I say I'll be back, you know what I mean?
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. Yeah.
Build it bigger and better, and we all come back. That's kind of the way it is. But I didn't leave for that reason.
Yeah, Baltimore has a pull, and, you know, you probably see this just as much as I do. People go away. They move to other cities, and they find themselves coming back to visit and then eventually moving back here to Baltimore. And I expect we're going to see more of that.
They handle websites like mine from out of town because, like, we want to know what's going on in Baltimore because we still care about it. And that's a Dundalk thing, too. You know, everybody that ever left Dundalk still kind of cares to know what's going on in the old neighborhood, even if they're not invested in it. But, I mean, I'm probably 2.1 miles from your district where I live now. I'm not that far. So I'm in the city...
All the time, I'm sure.
Three, four days a week. I mean, I'll be at Fatley's next week. I'll be at Coco's weekend. I mean, I'm in the city all the time. And I don't feel that demarcation of when I'm driving down 83 and Brandon's got the speed things there or whatever. I got to slow down before I get to P A L. But I don't feel like there's a difference in that. But there are definitely psychologically, for people who consider themselves Hartford County people or Carrow County people that, like, go into the city as a thing, I've never felt that way, and I hate that there's a perception of that. And look, 20 years of bad crime and all of that, and political mismanagement will do that. But I do like the fact that people, when they come back, and I invite them back, and say, you know, don't sleep on the city. The city's great.
Absolutely not. You know, it's funny you mention that, and it's funny. I mentioned earlier, I'm originally from New York. And so when I moved here, I didn't actually know the difference between the city and the county. I didn't. I learned that. And so...
What is an invisible line?
It's an invisible line. It means nothing to anybody else across the country. Nobody knows. Nobody cares. Baltimore is Baltimore.
Baltimore City, Baltimore County is a really, really unique...
Big, big difference. Yes, yes.
Municipal thing than they have in most other places.
Yeah, we're one of the, one of two independent cities across the country.
Yeah, every city is a part of a county in a general sense.
We are the only one. So, you know, for instance, I'm at Mako, Maryland Association of Counties, because Baltimore City is a county. But I also sit on M M L, the Maryland Municipal League, because we're a city. We're a city and a county. And so it puts us in a pretty interesting position. I won't bore you with all the details on what that means for tax revenue and support for infrastructure through the city. But, you know, I think it gives us maybe some additional opportunities. We can, we're able to speak for ourselves in many instances, but it also limits us in our ability to raise money. And so our tax revenue is hampered in part because we are an independent city.
Well, look, let's cut through all the bullshit here. I mean, the reason Trump could take over DC is they don't have a governor. Right? I mean, there's nobody to come defend this...
Yeah.
Pretty much unconstitutional act, you know, whatever you would call it, illicit mafia act, whatever it is, that if he comes and tries to take Baltimore...
I'm going to say, but we all know why he's doing this.
What's the color of your skin and the color of mine as well, being this man?
There's that. There's that. There's also, he doesn't want the Epstein files to come out.
Oh, of course.
He's trying to distract from the Epstein files, which, you know, I hate to go down that rabbit hole, but anything to distract from that. So I think, you know, hopefully this doesn't turn into something else, and hopefully we don't have to deal with that here in Baltimore. Certainly, I don't think it's necessary. I think we're making significant progress, and I'm really, really, I mean, really, really proud. And I tell the police department every day. I tell Monsey every day. Anytime I see them, how proud I am of the progress that we've made. But we should not rest on our laurels. We are not done. We're not done. We still have a lot of work to do here, and people are really counting on us, not to just get to where we were in the past, but get well beyond that. We want to be the greatest city in America. And in order to do that... And in order to do that, we can't just get to where we were in 2014. We gotta get beyond that.
Well, we got crab cakes and they don't.
That, see?
I'm just saying. Come get a crab cake.
Oh, I would love to do that. Appreciate you, Nestor. Thank you for having me on.
District 4, I came up, introduced himself earlier. We just met. But it's, it ain't over. Well, I gotta find the right crab cake in your district. I will. I don't know. I'm trying to, like, get my bearings about where exactly I want to take, but Swallow at the Hollow is yours, right?
Yes, Swallow at the Hollow is mine, yeah.
I'm just thinking, you know?
Yeah, we can hit Swallow at the Hollow anytime.
I'm just trying to think of where else we got crab cakes up in your district, but everywhere, probably every street corner. We're down here in Ocean City, Maryland. They got crab cakes down here as well. We've had the mayor on. We've had Tom Perlaz. We get so many. We have four county executives coming on. State Senator, we have our United States Senator, Chris Van Hollen coming by. So lots and lots of things happening here. It's all brought to you by our friends at the Maryland Lottery in conjunction with our newest partners at GBMC, almost in your district.
Almost, just outside, on the edge.
Just a little sound there, you know? We'll be back in Ocean City here, doing it the next couple of days if you're listening on AM 1570. And of course, we are eating our 27 favorite things to eat, including today's Fisher's popcorn because I'm in Ocean City.[1792.08]